To order with the invocation and pledge by the Honorable Travis Reader.
Goodness Christ, dear heavenly Father, thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to do the will of Newberry County. God continue to bless us as we continue to fight in your will and in your way. These blessings we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the release to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here tonight. Also, I'd like to welcome those who are on streaming live with us. Thank you for being able and willing to participate in county government. That being said, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Scurry, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Additions or deletion?
Mr. Chairman, request to move item number nine up to six B.
All right, we have a request to move nine to six B. What are the wishes of council? We have a motion to accept that?
I make a motion that we accept it.
Second. All right, do we have a mo- uh, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Motion by Hitt, um, Johnson, second by Reader. All in favor? All right, thank you. Item number three, personal appearances, voices of pride, Newberry County disabilities and special needs, press presentation of proclamation declaring March twenty twenty-one as Disabilities Awareness Month in Newberry County. Abigail, no? Okay.
You want me to read that into the record, Mr. Chairman, first?
Yes.
Um, whereas more than five hundred thousand South Carolina citizens and families are impacted by severe lifelong disabilities with no distinction as to race, culture, geography, age, sex, or economic class. And whereas the South Carolina Department of Disabilities and Special Needs serves people with severe lifelong physical and intellectual disabilities, including autism, traumatic brain injury, and spinal cord injury, and whereas the Newberry County Disabilities and Special Needs Board works with families to provide support services which promote economic self-sufficiency and independence. And whereas people with lifelong disabilities are productive citizens, neighbors, and family members deserving of respect and opportunities for economic self-sufficiency, independence, and personal growth. And whereas the twenty twenty-one statewide Observance of Disabilities Awareness Month celebrates the successful partnership between people with and without disabilities and the increasing involvement of people with disabilities in education, employment, and community activities. Now, therefore, Newberry County Council does hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-one as Disabilities Awareness Month in Newberry County. And encourages our citizens to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities, to recognize the many contributions they make to our community, and to honor the dedication of the caregivers who bring support and hope to their fellow citizens, adopted by Newberry County Council in a meeting duly assembled in Newberry, South Carolina this third day of March twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. All right, would you like to come to the podium and talk?
My name's Bob Jones. I have the privilege to serve as the executive director for the Disabilities Board. And normally, we have Ms. Connie Gollman up here, and I'll take a backseat to her, but during these times, there's been a lot of concessions made by everyone, as well as in here. We can't, on behalf of almost two hundred people in Newberry County that are supported by the board, thank you for this proclamation and recognition. You know, it is a very special group of people, but we really appreciate the continued support that this council, this community has shown to our board. It's been very challenging. We've had, uh, I'm proud to say we're COVID-free right now. Uh, we've done relatively well. We've been very conservative. Our work crews are getting up and going, so I want to let everybody know. Our grasshopper yard crew is open for business. We have our cleaning with pride groups. And just want to say thank you to everyone. And I also have a PowerPoint. I'm going to leave with Chairman, if that's okay, just for future reference. Do you have three and a half minutes? Borrow that PowerPoint. It shows some of the activities that have gone on for the past year and before. It has a parade of homes, but it shows some of the many people that you've touched with your, you know, great support. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate everything.
I have a son well served by DDSN and your support of my son. I've seen firsthand the work that you do and your sponsorship, getting him to the state games and then to the national, and then when he made USA Olympic Games out in Seattle, you guys made sure he got there and supported him one hundred percent. But I seen, I've seen the work as a parent, and I hope you know it's a blessing.
Uh, we really appreciate it. We would, by the way, make this team put in your calendar. That's our fundraising golf tournament. Todd will be there. The team headed up by his son Andrew.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all's work.
Anybody else here with that particular group, if you would please stand? No? Uh, generally, it's a pretty good following with y'all, and I always like to recognize them, but, uh...
Connie was planning to make it, but evidently, you know, I've got time for that, so...
Well, tell Connie we missed her dearly, so, um, so now do we have a motion to accept that proclamation? Motion by Hitt, second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Again, thank you for all y'all do, the entire group. Makes a difference in our community. All right, next, Abigail Fuller, Newberry County Library Director. Come on up to the podium. Glad to have you. Glad to get to meet you.
First of all, thank you very much for the county council for having me here tonight, and I just wanted to say what an honor and a privilege it is to serve as the new Newberry County Library Director. I'm a native South Carolinian. Um, I actually grew up in Gilbert, South Carolina, and so we were frequently in Newberry as well for different activities that were going on here. And, um, my husband is a professor at Newberry College, and I worked there before. Um, I've spent fifteen years in the academic library system at Newberry College and Presbyterian. And so, even though we didn't move to the area until two thousand twelve, we've been active in, um, the Newberry County, just in the community in general, since two thousand five. So, um, my husband is a theater professor, so he works with a lot of the different groups, like the community players. He's done the Ballet Guild, um, sets and a whole bunch of other things, so really been involved with the community. So, I'm just excited to be here and excited to serve. Um, I hope that in the, you know, following year and in the following years of COVID, we'll decide to let up, that, um, we can increase our outreach to serve every population within Newberry County. And, um, just to be able to, um, just be a life of service, I guess, for the county and be an integral part of it, um, to be what we really, we see ourselves as an integral part, so we'd love for everybody in the county to see us that way as well. So, um, in the few coming months, um, we'll be launching a new website, and we're also going to have a rebranding, um, logo contest with the local schoolchildren to see if they can help us come up with a new brand for the library. And just a really way to say that we're here and to reintroduce ourselves to the community. And I look forward to serving you. If you can, if you have any suggestions for me, or if there's any way I can help you, please don't hesitate to reach out. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions or comments, folks?
I'd just like to say welcome. Looking forward, um, to seeing you in action, um, at, at the, uh, Newberry Library.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Reader. I'm looking forward to it too, and as I said, I hope that y'all maybe all come visit us if we have a, if you have a chance. And, um, I'm hoping that COVID-willing, we'll be able to really maybe do some in-person events for our summer programs, and we will be having them, um, at the branch in Newberry as well and the branch in Whitmire, which we haven't done in the past before. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here tonight, and thanks for serving us and all of our wonderful people in Newberry County in that capacity. All right, Amy Perkins, registration and, yeah. Amy Perkins, Registration and Election Commission Director.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you to the council. I am honored to be standing in front of you as the new Director of Voter Registration and Elections. I am a native of Newberry, South Carolina. I was born and raised here. I'm the daughter of Leo and Eloise Bishop. I graduated from Newberry High School, the University of South Carolina, with a degree in urban geography, which is also urban planning. I have a master's degree in adult training and education. I have worked with the Elections Committee or Board for over eight years. And I also used to work at the library. I worked there for five years. Um, I'm excited about taking on this position. And I welcome, if anyone has any questions or anything they need to see me about, please do not hesitate to email me, call me anytime at all. And thank you for having me here so that I could introduce myself to all of you this evening. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions for Amy?
Uh, I appreciate all your enthusiasm. I've been knowing Amy for years. We actually go to church together, so I know she's going to do an excellent job at, at the voter registration office.
Yeah, when you said Newberry High School, Newberry County native, and University of South Carolina, the only thing I hate is I had to have this mask on so I couldn't smile.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. All right, item number four, ordinance number oh one, oh two, twenty-one, and ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of Newberry County, South Carolina Special Source Revenue Bond Industrial Park Project in principal amount not exceeding five million, five hundred thousand dollars in one or more series. The application of the proceeds of said bonds to defray for economic development purposes and the cost of certain infrastructure improvements and of acquiring certain property in Newberry County to refund outstanding amounts of the county's Series Two Thousand Six Special Source Revenue Bonds and other matters relating thereto. Um, Mr. Adams, do you want to kind of explain that before we declare a public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this borrowing would refinance approximately two point one million dollars of existing indebtedness, and that's on the original Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. It would also finance about three point four million dollars of new indebtedness, and it's all related to the acquisition of industrial development property along Highway seven seventy-three corridor. Uh, the annual principal, principal and interest payment costs do not increase above the current annual amortization level of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The new term will be for about seventeen and a half years. Uh, on February second, uh, the State Fiscal Affairs Authority voted to allow Newberry County to issue these special source revenue bonds. And if approved, the bonding would be funded by the lender tomorrow, and, uh, the anticipated closing on the property purchase is scheduled for Friday, March fifth.
All right, with that being said, uh, we are declaring this to public hearing. Is there anyone from the public to speak pro or con on this particular one? Okay, to the, according to the sign-up sheet on this particular topic, ordinance oh one, two, oh two, twenty-one, we have Becky Bowlin sign up to speak.
Oh, yes, I'm here for the, um, next one for the rezoning of the land. Yes, I'm sorry, if I signed up on the wrong page.
Yeah, okay, the, the public hearing for that was last time, but anyway, yeah.
So, we can't speak on that this time?
We'll probably give that opportunity.
Okay, so just wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Patrick Metz, you sign up for the, this particular one? All right, anybody from the public speak pro or con? Hearing and seeing no one come forward, we declare the public hearing closed. Um, do we have a motion to speed to third reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Johnson. All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we need a technical amendment. Staff requests a technical amendment. Uh, it is in the form of a marked up document of the original ordinance. It's in front of each of you. This has been agreed to by the county's legal counsel and the lending institution's legal counsel. Uh, the language principally provides for an updated debt service schedule and clarifies that any debt against the county's stream of FLO payments for new SSRBs be issued only if there is sufficient debt service coverage available. But again, this is a, a technical amendment, and we would need someone to move it, um, and a second and a discussion on that amendment.
Okay, all right. Do we have someone who makes, uh, amendment to the language?
I make a motion to amend the language as presented to council.
A second.
Second. All right, now, we need a vote on that.
You'll have discussion on that if there be any. Um, and then beyond that, you're voting only on adding the language. It's going to be your first vote after this discussion period, just to add the language to the original ordinance.
All right, we have a motion on, and a second to adopt the amended language. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of that amended language? Unanimous. Now, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you already have a motion, um, um, I'm sorry here, uh, for third reading. I think somebody has to move the question on approving the ordinance as amended.
Okay, do we have a motion to amu- uh...
I make a motion to, to approve the, uh, motion as amended.
All right, got a motion, second. Mary, Arrowood, any discussion on that? This is a little bit more complex than the normal procedure, so all in favor? It is unanimous, right, Nick LS? Did you?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, thank you. All right, item number five, ordinance number eleven, twenty-four, twenty, and ordinance acting on the request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number oh six, eleven, sixteen, codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances so as to rezon one real estate parcel totaling fifty-two and nine, fifty-two point nine acres designated as TM parcel number six thirty-one dash twelve, tract A from single-family residential, and rule to single-family residential RSM. This is the third reading, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to interrupt for a second. Um, I, I made the motion that we, uh, extend, delay this third reading, uh, until the second meeting in March. Uh, in fact, there was quite a bit, and it, just to make sure, to second-guess myself, I went back to the streaming version. Uh, I think you were talking about second meeting and when that date was going to be. We voted on that. We cannot vote until the second meeting in March.
I thought we said until we had a community meeting.
No, uh, we said until the second meeting in March. We, and, uh, so, just upon a parliamentary procedure, we can't vote on, we can't move it forward without convening the council, re-voting, and so forth, so...
When we adopted the agenda as presented, that should have been presented at that time, I think.
Well, uh, maybe it should have, but it shouldn't have been on here at this time. Um, so... And in all fairness, I asked some people when I came in today, without saying anything to them, I said, when is, what was your understanding of when this was going to be voted on? And these are the people that were here, and they said the second meeting in March. So, you know, we'd be doing an injustice to some people to try to move this forward.
Okay, procedure, I wish you had said that at the beginning when we were talking about.
Well, we're, we're having a discussion now, whether we had it then or now. Maybe I should have brought it up then, uh, but it shouldn't have been on here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Tophke, you got an opinion on that, or just?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have the same recollection, but I'll defer to council member Hitt. But regardless of that, if a majority of the board, of the commission, the council tonight wanted to say, we will vote on it tonight, somebody can make a motion to say, we want to bring it forward tonight.
Okay.
Does that have to be a motion and a second, then approved?
All right, so what are the wishes of council? Do you want to delay it for one more meeting?
I, I have to say that my recollection is the same as Mr. Hitt's, that we were going to kick this for a month. And so, as much as I'd like to go forward, I don't want somebody that was here last time to say, you said it was going to be a month, and then you did it in two weeks. That, that looks like a, a slide. And, and the last thing that this county council wants to look like is that we tried to run something through that wasn't appropriate, so... Uh, I, I, my recollection is the same as his, that we kicked this for a month with agreement that that meeting would be held, and I think we ought to be true to our, our word to the folks that were here that night.
All right, so do we have a motion and a second to delay it till the next meeting?
I think that's already been done.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, I think that's all done. I think we just don't vote now and move on.
Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing you'd have to do, I believe you've got a motion and a second on the floor, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
There's no motion.
No, no, there was not a motion and a second at this time. So, we can have a motion just to table it to the next meeting?
I would just leave.
Just leave it? All right, we'll hold it the next time.
Now, my recollections aren't good, but my recollection is the same, so...
I went back today and watched the streaming version just to, to be sure.
I just want, if somebody was here and thought they didn't need to come back tonight, that's not fair.
That's right. That would be terrible.
Yes, sir. All right, item number six, A, and ordinance authorizing, uh, ordinance number oh three, oh six, twenty-one, and ordinance authorizing, one, the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Newberry County, South Carolina, the county, and Newberry Electric Cooperative Incorporated, acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors collectively, the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes which respect with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project. Two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the coun- company, the project. Three, and certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project. And four, matters relating thereto. Um...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself as I work for Newberry Electric Co-op and, uh, the co-op's company.
Yes, and thank you for submitting a letter stating that, so we'll call you just as soon as we get back. And that's prior, uh, nine was moved to six B, so did you want to have to leave twice, my friend?
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm. All right, have a motion to speed first reading. Motion by Mr. Reader, second by, uh, Mr. Hitt. All right, this is the first reading. Mr. Adams, you want to explain any of this?
Mr. Chairman, Keith Avery is here, uh, from the co-op to answer any questions. Uh, the co-op is seeking FLO treatment, or a six percent assessment ratio instead of a ten and a half percent assessment ratio, and a twenty percent special source revenue credit for those investments that are described in the project. And, uh, everyone, uh, has a description here of that. I'll describe it briefly. Uh, the investments primarily concern the expansion of broadband service to certain areas of the county, uh, which in the project description are listed by any...
uh, which in the project description are listed by any C substation name, and the addition of a substation to serve the expanding Mid-Carolina Commerce Park as might be necessary to serve new users. The FLO treatment, uh, and the SSRC treatment would be limited to specifically those items listed in the project description, and also to, not to exceed the amount of fourteen and a half million dollars. And finally, the Economic Development Committee did recommend this to council for first reading tonight.
All right, heard the explanation, we've got a motion, we've got a second, any additional discussion?
I'd just like to thank the Co-op for their partnerships and what they're doing. I, I know Reverend Scurry and I represent that Bush River area, and that, that broadband is definitely needed up in that area, and so we're grateful to see those kind of things happening and, and we appreciate what you've done in the industrial parks as well, so it, we, we just appreciate the Co-op.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, nine, which is actually six B now, resolution 0121, a resolution commu- committing to negotiate an agreement between Newberry County, South Carolina, the county, and Newberry Electric Cooperated, Cooperative Incorporated, other project sponsors collectively, the company providing certain benefits, including, one, a fee in lieu of tax and an incentive agreement pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project; two, the benefits of a multi-county industrial park to be made available to the company and the project; three, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project, and four, other matters relating thereto. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, Code Section 12-4440 of the South Carolina Code of Laws requires that counties formally identify projects for which they are negotiating fee deals. This resolution identifies the Newberry Electric Cooperative project, which is item, agenda number six, as such.
All right, item six B, do we have a motion to accept this resolution? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Get Mr. Nick back in, please. All right, item number seven, ordinance number 030721, and ordinance amending chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances for Newberry County by adding language permitting to council member participation in council meetings remotely through virtual electronic means as a permanent option. Uh, Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, this ordinance would make permanent council members' ability to participate virtually or electronically in meetings of full council as well as councils committee meetings. Councils currently exercising this option under an emergency ordinance, which expires sixty days after its approval.
All right, do we have a motion to this be the first reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Shealy, discussion?
I'd like to discuss this a little bit and, uh, as the council, that this is not by any means gonna be used to take over any live meetings, that we're using it for emergencies. And it's not to, for us not to be here, we still wanna have our face-to-face meetings. But that's, this is just making it legal where we can do it.
Yes, we don't want it to abuse the people that come and actually took the meetings at cities. But, as we have seen, it has been effective.
Yes.
It has been effective. Mr. Hip?
I was the first one.
I'd like to amend this ordinance to at least require, uh, the council members that aren't present at the meeting to electronically, or through some means, notify you or the administration of the reason for their absence from the meeting. I don't want this to be an item of convenience in the future for any of us. And, and I don't want us to appear that it's an item of convenience. So I want everybody who uses it to go on record to say, you know, I've zoomed in this meeting and this is why, this is why I wasn't there in person.
Okay, uh, I think that's probably a very reasonable. Only thing is, on the right end, it may have to come in after the fact. For example, if somebody gets caught on the interstate or something coming over the road, and they may be able to connect.
Not be zooming on the interstate.
Well, no, but if you're sitting there, like in stalled traffic just a while ago.
I understand as long as they're pulling over.
Yeah, yeah.
We just need to go on record, full transparency, don't need to have people thinking that somebody's not showing up because they don't have a good reason.
Yeah.
Can we just have them announce when they come in by that, that they, the reason why? Make it that part of the public record of the meeting body?
As long as it's part of the public record.
Yes.
You know, have, like I said, electronically, whatever, it needs to go on record.
Is that a, uh?
We, we can either add language to that effect if you vote on that, or we can wait and give it for you so you know verbatim what it is before you vote on it. So you could either vote and have staff add it, or if you give us language, we can write it down.
I can just make an amendment that, uh, council members choosing to use the Zoom option shall notify administration and/or chairman of council, uh, prior to or as soon afterwards as possible.
Okay, you're getting it.
Or who's signing on?
Our jury. Our jury.
Yeah, because this email him is not gonna put it on the record, but if you announce it at the council meeting, that will make it part of the.
Yeah, if you just say when you come on the screen, hey, I hear the reason I'm zooming.
When the ma- when the meeting's called to order, she'll announce that they're virtual and say the reason why they're virtual that meeting.
And that'll be captured in the minute.
That's right.
Right.
That's right, I think that's, not trying to.
That's all we want.
Yeah, I think that might be a better way to handle it.
Can I, can I add one, or ask just one thing? Can we just give that to them to make the language, since we trying to make a knee-jerk decision right now? Let them make the language and then we'll approve it in the second and third reading?
We can, we can get it from the copy of, the video copy of this meeting.
Yes, yeah, just try to put something in there. We'll go ahead and go with first reading tonight, and then we will get the actual verbiage for it.
Well, if, I mean, you can, is, is there, there was a motion for Mr. Hip, and there was a second to it? Or was there? Okay, I think it's fine if you go ahead and vote on the, uh.
But which motion, we talked about, he motioned one thing, but I suggested another thing, so where are we?
I think what we're gonna say is that they either notify the administration or the chairman in advance, or announce when they come on the screen.
Okay.
Okay, if you say.
Or when they join electronically.
It's not gonna be part of the record if you do the first one. An email to the, to the chairman is not gonna be made part of the record.
Well, the, the chairman.
The chairman would announce it and it would become part of the record.
In, in the past, in the past, if we had a member who's absent, for instance, the chairman would say, uh, so-and-so's out today because they had some minor surgery or whatever. They can say, he can say that, you know, here's, here's the reason.
Gotcha.
Why this person's here. And we'll all, what we'll all be attune ourselves to is when we get to the meeting and it's, we see somebody's not here, uh, we'll look at Taylor, was there an email?
Right.
She'll, she'll be way ahead of us on that, she'll already have given everybody the email and so forth.
Misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Thanks to COVID for new orders, I think all of us have positive intent on this. It's just a matter of trying to make sure we get it. All right, got the motion, got the second. Uh, no additional discussion? All in favor? It is.
Amendment.
That's the amendment.
That's the amendment.
Right.
Unanimous, all right.
Now, on the main motion as amended.
Okay, now, do we have a motion and a second on the main motion as amended?
Yes.
I make a motion.
All right, Mary Scur- uh, Mary Scurry, got her. Scurry and Mary, uh, first and se- uh, motion second, any discussion on that? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to number seven, I want to go ahead and bring up a point that's gonna come up about folks joining, um, electronically or virtually. The Planning Commission, uh, which is covered by this next ordinance that's coming up, has eleven members. And, um, there are a couple issues. One, there are only seven seats up there, so if everybody wants to play in the new virtual world, the Zoom world, or, or in the new live streaming world, I'm sorry, then somebody's got to join by Zoom. That was just a concession we had to make based on the size of the room. So it's gonna be a little bit different for them. The same thing for council could hold true for the BZA, it's a smaller group. But we don't have actually room for eleven people. The other thing about Planning Commission is we've had a chronic problem getting a quorum here. The last meeting, or actually, there was one last night, so the meeting before last, we only had a quorum because somebody zoomed in. Of course, they can still say why, but it's gonna be awkward if they say, I'm zooming in tonight because it wasn't enough room for me. I mean, and you can't know that until you get here. There's could be some awkwardness about it, is what I'm telling you. And, um, we still have not adjusted to that other than, it hasn't been a problem because we don't have, uh, we rarely have eleven people here for a Planning Commission meeting. They don't all show up at once. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Item number eight, ordinance number 030821, an ordinance permitting the Newberry County Joint Planning Commission and the Newberry County Board of Zoning Appeals to conduct virtual electronic meetings permanently. Just heard the explanation, do we have the motion to be the first reading? A motion by Mr. Nick Shealy, second by Ms. Mary Arrowood, any discussion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to virtually offer the same amendment as ours, that we have them go on record, um, as to why they're zooming in rather than attending. We need to know that the people that we're assigning committees to are attending and doing their work as well.
All right, you heard the recommendation of, um, Mr. Hip. Any discussion?
Actually, we don't have a second to my motion to amend yet.
Do we have a second on the amendment? Okay, second by Mr. Reader, all right, do we have a motion on the, a motion second? Do we have a, uh, what's the, what's the wishes of council on the amendment? All in favor?
Yes.
All right, now, do we have a motion on the first reading as amended? Mr. Hip, um, Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Shealy, any discussion on that? I just want to say, y'all, we're all up here trying to make all of this right, and it's a moving target because it is all new to every single one of us up here, and the hopes and the wishes are that we make it convenient for those who are kind enough to volunteer and serve in our county, at the same time protect them and their families and everyone else's health and well-being in the midst of it. So, uh, again, the intentions are all great, we may look confused and somewhat, but, but all intentions are great on this. All right, sorry about that, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, I mean, nine has been moved to six B, so that's been covered. Item number 10, appointments, does anybody have any appointments tonight?
Yes, sir, I have a, a couple of appointments.
All right, we'll take them one at a time, okay?
Yep, that, that'll be fine. Miss Kitzie Johnson, better known as Mama Kitzie to the Whitmire community, after thirty-something years on the library board, has decided that her time has come to an end. Um, and so she has told me she is resigning from that board. Uh, and so I would nominate Ms. Linda Bullard, who is the retired librarian from Whitmire, to take her place on that board.
Okay, uh, you heard that motion, uh, and do we have a second of that particular person? Second by Mr. Scurry, any discussion? Only thing I want to say is, thanks to the outgoing board member, there's a lot of value to people who volunteer their time, so thanks for the years of service that.
Many, many, she's the wife of Lefty Johnson, if you.
Yes, 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 the legend.
If we could do something to acknowledge that some way, that would be awesome. Just a letter or something, that would be a pretty amazing thing.
Yeah, she would greatly appreciate that.
Um, my next is.
Well, let's just, all in favor of that?
I thought you did, I'm sorry.
It is unanimous. All right, next?
Uh, next, I would like to appoint to the expired term of Ms. Coleman, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Committee, Mr. Hugh Lister.
Okay.
To Hugh is retired contractor, most of you know Hugh from Cannon Construction and those places, uh, well-versed in that, and so I'd like to appoint him to that committee.
All right, you heard the recommendation, the motion for Mr. Hugh Lister. Do we have a second on that particular individual? Second by Mr. Scurry, any discussion? All in favor? That is also unanimous, next.
And then last, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Louis Lee to the Newberry Water and Sewer Board. He's been on the committee for some time and has agreed to continue serving, so I'd like to reappoint him.
All right, you heard the nomination of Mr. Louis Lee, do we have a second on that? Uh, yes, by Mr. Reader, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
That would be all.
Anybody else have any appointments? Appreciate you getting those done, my friend. All right, uh, item number 11, Committee Reports, Economic Development Committee Meeting that was held on 03-121, Mr. Rick Farmer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council, it's always a pleasure to stand before you and talk about the economic development and the Economic Development Committee meetings, uh, of Newberry County Council. Uh, your Economic Development Committee met on Monday night. Uh, first order of business was to elect a new chairman. Uh, Chairman Livingston was nominated for that position and elected as chair. Uh, we also gave an, a update on project activity. Project activity is steady, we had three in the last quarter. That is historically a little slow, but it's much higher than it was in the height of the, the COVID crisis last, uh, uh, spring and summer. Things started to pick up last fall, and, and they've been pretty steady ever since. So, uh, we did have three new projects last, uh, quarter. One, Atlantic, I just found out on Friday that we've been cut from that, and they're focusing on an upstate county. Terms of, uh, product development, uh, we're making lots of moves on product development. I want to thank council for, for that, uh, uh, voting on that five and a half million dollar bond issue. That's very important, thank the administration for bringing that to you. Uh, we're, we're doing a, a lot on product development, but that's the name of the game in economic development, if you don't have product, you don't even get a look, so. Uh, one of the ones, we actually brought this online last summer, but we just got the final Palmetto site report last month. So this is effectively a certified site now, it's two hundred acres. It's designed as a single or dual user site, but we will, we will take all comers and, and evaluate each project as they come in. We are working in partnership with Duke on this in some ways, and we're both currently marketing this site. So we're proud of that. Uh, product development in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park, of course, uh, uh, Newberry County Council authorized purchase of this property back in 2006. This thing has always been bisected by a creek, and until this year, we've never been able to get across that creek and show that property. So the red property to the left, that's all property that Newberry County owns that is planned and, uh, with master plan, roads permitted, but, uh, previously, we've not been able to develop it because we can't get over there. This bond issue will allow us, in addition to monies currently in the budget, to build a road and a bridge and get across that creek and, and show these sites to prospects. We're very glad, uh, very quickly, the project itself, the yellow phase, the red phase, and, and half of the green phase will be, uh, put into place. This will get us a road, a bridge, water, sewer, and all, all the other things that we need to make this a truly viable and showable, uh, site. Uh, as you can see, we could fit, um, somewhere possibly, this is just a plan. It ca- it, it will develop differently, but this is a, a build-out that shows, you know, about seven or eight new buildings, uh, and some of them rather significant, up to three hundred thousand square feet. But, of course, one thing that Mid-Carolina Commerce Park is not conducive to is large footprint facilities. It would be so prohibitively cost, uh, it would so, be so expensive to put a million square foot in Mid-Carolina Commerce Park, it would probably kill the deal for those, uh, things alone. So, we've been working really hard, the administration has been, been working really hard to come up with some sites that can fit that million square foot, uh, footprint. So we are, uh, we are in the latter stages of this purchase right across the street, and one of the great things about it, these are, this is a concept that shows three, three hundred thousand square foot buildings. This one shows a million square foot build-out. So this can handle the, uh, the large footprint, and that, that's been a, that's been a, a hole in our product offerings in the past, but now we've got two sites where we could put very large facilities, so we're very grateful for that. Uh, in terms of prospect development, we just received a, a new drone video, uh, from the Central SC for MCCP2. Now, we actually did five drone videos last year, and they were paid for by a grant from the state of South Carolina. Uh, and so we did five sites, but when we started that process, this, this, uh, uh, site was not on the radar at that time. So we scrambled to try to pull something together last year. Central SC, uh, paid for this at no cost, uh, so we're really appreciative of that. Also, I found out today that, well, I've known for a while that Newberry County will be featured in a county spotlight article in, uh, SC Biz Magazine. It's gonna be eight pages, uh, and there'll be some very positive publicity for Newberry. I was told today that it will come out this week, and we'll share that with you when, when we do get that. Other thing, Central SC invoices, the, the committee did approve payment of a pair of invoices at its meeting on Monday night. Uh, the first was for the three months that have just passed, and the second is for the three months that are upcoming. Normally, we approve and pay these at the beginning of the quarter. Normally, we approve and pay these at the beginning of the quarter, but we don't always have the invoices in hand when we have the committee meetings. And of course, we can't ask the committee to approve an invoice that we don't actually have, so I neglected to ask that be, that be included on the agenda yesterday, so I will ask that that be on the agenda in two weeks and bring that to you at that time. We conducted a drive-through job fair in conjunction with the, the State Department of Commerce, Piedmont Technical College, and SC Works, that was conducted two weeks ago. The turnout was a little disappointing, we only had twenty-one cars and about thirty people, but on the bright side, we helped thirty job seekers, you know, find some leads for jobs, so we're glad about that. We, we don't know if we're going to do another drive fair, it was an awful lot of work for, for a very small, and we had to have each company bring three people so they could talk to these, these people at the same time, so it was a lot of work. We will be helping with job fairs in the future, but hopefully, the next job fair will be a traditional job fair with hundreds of people, you know, meeting face-to-face with, with employers. I used to call these existing industry visits, but now I'm calling them contacts because at least half of them are virtual or over the telephone, and of course, we reach out and we try to visit every company in Newberry County once or twice a year, and some, of course, were in multiple times over the, the course of the year. The other thing the committee discussed is the electric cooperative fee agreement, which you guys just passed, so thank you very much for that. I think it surprised both Mr. Avery and myself that electric cooperatives were even eligible for fee treatment, so we're very glad that, that you guys have approved that. And that concludes my committee report for this meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody got any questions for it? Comments?
I'd just like to say thank you for the job that you're doing and we're truly pleased with the things that you're doing and the future looking very brightly for Newberry County.
Thank you, sir, and that only happens because it's a top-down issue. When you have good leadership and good administration, then the economic developer can help make an impact.
Yes, I want to say thanks for the drive-through regardless of what the turnout was. It probably was a lot of effort, but I think somebody at the economic development meeting asked a question, what was unemployment rate?
Yes, sir.
And I think you said roughly around three percent.
It's about, it was three point six about a month ago, I don't know exactly what it is today, but it's going to be right around that same, so we're effectively at full employment. And we do have industries that are complaining a bit about not finding workers, but that's certainly not a new complaint.
That, I think, is indicative of the workforce that we have, that there's, you know, although jobs that we have, it's not a lot of people out there looking, but as the old starfish story says, if it helped one person for that thing get a job, it made a difference to that person.
Absolutely.
And that company, so thank you and thank you for everything that y'all do, the entire team, to include Wayne, Kara, yourself, and Taylor, everybody that puts an effort into that, and council members. Mr. Hip?
Mr. Chairman, Rick, yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kara, everybody in, in economic development, y'all have done a superb job. You did indicate that, you know, we're adding product.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a finite inventory.
Yes, sir.
I'm not a part of the economic development committee, but I did participate the other night through Zoom, which made it good. One of the things that I heard is when we're all, when we're looking at industries, one of the things we always ask for is how many people they're going to employ, how much money they're going to spend, what is the average salary?
Yes, sir.
And one of the potential prospects, average salary was less than what's being proposed
Yes, sir.
as, as the minimum federal, minimum salary, salary for federal employees. The only thing that I would say is we need to be very careful that we don't go out and in, in, seek industries whose average employment, average salary is going to be lower than what we really want going forward in the county, especially with, with our finite inventory.
Yes, sir.
And so I think that's, I'm sure that's something we look at, that's something we need to consider when we vote, is that we don't need to, to entice industries to come in to pay people less money.
Yes, sir, but of course, it's certainly not my job to value a project, and we usually don't know what wages are until we're well into the game. You never know on first contact what the proposed wages are. You might know capital investment, sometimes you don't even know that, and so of course, my job is to set the table and, and let the council, you know, decide if something is worthy of pursuit.
And it's, it's our job to consider that before we go out.
Absolutely, and wages have historically always been important to council and the administration and to the economic development department. You know, I, I love to say I want to win them all, which is true in a sense, but, you know, I completely understand that adding a massive amount of low-wage jobs can, you know, have some damaging effects to the, to the wage structure of the community.
And sometimes we don't want that going in our buildings anyway because it devalues what we potentially could have, and I understand, I think that's well taken. The other thing I will say, we need to try to make sure we don't have anything hazardous to the communities that we bring in for, as chemicals, etc. So, you know, again, I know you do a good job of trying to do, do everything, but, you know, I, I definitely don't want us to bring in hazardous materials, hazardous waste, hazardous features that could damage some of our communities like we've had proposed in the past.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Do we have a reason for executive session? None. Public comments, I think the only person that signed up for public comments may be signed up on the wrong one. Patrick Metz, do you want to speak? Okay, hearing that, we don't have any public comments. Comments or requests from the county administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank again Urban West and Taylor Davenport for this streaming virtual participation platform. It has proved to be very robust from the start, and I've been impressed with how, how well it's worked and how well they've designed it.
Yes, thank you, and it is, it's, kind of scares you when you talk here yourself so clearly. Comments or requests from council members, Mr. Shealy?
Appreciate everybody's hard work. Rick, Kara, your office, Ms. Adams, good job, thank you.
Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Ms. Arrowood?
Same thing I want to thank, especially the economic development group, Rick, Kara, Wayne, anybody that's helped with it, because we see it coming together and it feels good, feels good. It's good for the county.
Mr. Johnson?
Just on a personal note, I'd like to thank everyone on council and the staff who has poured out overwhelming support on me and my family, with my grandchildren, almost every per, in fact, I don't know of anybody that hadn't, in some form or fashion, asked or done something or said we're praying and, and I can tell you, we've seen and felt those prayers and, and we see God at work in it, and so we're just trusting Him. The little girl's up to one point eleven pounds and the little boy's up to one point five, which was his birth weight, so we got a long, long road ahead of us, but we have seen and felt those prayers and, and we just believe in God to do a great work. But every, every one of your phone calls or text messages or emails have meant something to me and I hope that I have let you know that. Administration, everybody's just been amazing. I'm blessed to be a part of this.
Blessed to have you as a part of it. Mr. Reader?
I just want to thank everybody that's here tonight, as well as everybody that's on Zoom, for participating in county government. You don't know how your presence and your thoughts has that effect on us, to make us work even harder for everyone in Newberry County.
Amen. Again, want to thank all the council members for working, trying to be here, trying to do what's right in these difficult times. This, I'm going to leave with Taylor, if anybody wants to get a copy of it or see it, be, feel free to put it there. One of the things that I'm hearing a lot of comments out in our community about is just trash. Folks, please try to help keep our, our roads and all clean. We need to maybe start brainstorming some ways that we might can do something with that, I'm not sure what, I'm, it's, sometimes you can't, and I hate to say it, you can't legislate stupidity of people just throwing stuff out, and I, I know that's pretty blunt, but, you know, when you see somebody roll one down and chunk it out, that's just stupidity as far as trying to make our community look good. So again, just something out there for thought right now, I'll be willing to take phone calls on anybody's got any great ideas on it, I'd be happy to entertain. And then on the lighter side, Todd, just want to say that I'm extremely excited percentage-wise, your grandbaby's gaining weight at a faster rate than I am. So.
Can we, can we get that put on the website? I think that'd be pretty cool to support them putting it on our website.
Great idea. All right, future meetings, county council, three seventeen twenty-one, six P M. Finance, yes, I'm sorry.
The venerable Mr. Scurry has not spoken.
Did I, I thought we called you, did I miss you, Mr. Scurry? Oh, Lord, I'm trying to treat you like Mary Scurry treats you, go ahead.
They're lovely.
Anything you want to say, my friend?
No, sir, everything's fine.
Okay, I didn't mean to, I, I'm sorry, I did not mean to treat you like your wife.
I understand, didn't treat me.
Didn't try to silence you. Thanks for calling out to my attention. Future meetings, county council, three seventeen twenty-one, six P M. Finance committee meeting, three twenty-nine, six P M. County council meeting, four seven twenty-one, six P M. And again, folks, as we start developing our budget, finance committee, that's an extremely important event that's coming up to try to make sure we keep taxes and everything as low as we possibly can. Item number seventeen, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion second? We are so adjourned, my friend.